Hotter than I thought. Good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council's special work session for Thursday, September 26th, 2024. Do we hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyways, guys have it. Just for the record, Deputy Mayor Bodie is on line and our Councilman Belivo is on his way. So we'll be getting going here. Moving on with additional department budget, biennial budget department presentations, and we're gonna start with Director Hoffman with Community Development. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. We have a number of slides tonight. I'm gonna try and be brief. Some of them are wordy. Apologies for that. But you have the materials and dive into this detail. I'll focus on the high-level summary. And the main points. Tonight, I hope to discuss a little bit about the department reorganization. Relate the planning department functions and duties and makeup as well as the building and then be available for questions. To start off, as you know, as you did the reorganization. Building and planning are now together under the department umbrella of community development. A community development director was hired. And then a discussion going into this draft budget. Based on that reorganization was how much to change. Change all the numbers. Change just the titles, change the meaning or summarize it. The the balance was that the least confusing way was to focus on keeping the numbers the same so that you could see numbers through time. In the next two years, we can continue with the reorganization into the next budget and gravitate a little bit more. So the numbers more or less are are easy to project over time or follow over time. But the department name and division level and so forth are different. That said, the FTEs are the same. The primary difference overall is that the Environmental Sustainability Specialist is now added to community development. This is not a new FTE. Under the category of not bearing the lead, I was hoping to summarize right off from the beginning. What the Community Development Department budget is, and it's it's generally a strong status quo budget. That achieves the existing efforts and functions with existing resources, and there are some changes that I'll go over. Some highlights from the budget is the status quo summary. In our opinion, no increase or or decrease to net FTEs. It addresses inflationary pressures. It's primarily personal resource oriented department budget. Professional services, there are some changes due to some grants received and and scopes of work associated with that. And one change that was noted in the Human Resources presentation is an added position, but not an added FTE. So that specific page is page forty-nine of fifty. That's the associate planner to have those descriptions in the range in the budget. But no filling of that position is proposed. An overview of the planning department. As it's currently known, which in the future would be the planning division of the Community Development Department. This four basic functions, advanced planning, current planning, code enforcement, economic development. Those are the traditional umbrella. I've added a fifth category, which is no silo, small city, lots to do. And I don't want to characterize it as other duties as a sign, but it's broad ranging. In that sense, if we have a focus on our primary functions and can do other things to help other departments. Or just other individualized efforts that is under our umbrella. We do that with an assistant planner. Three-quarter time urban forest planner that is primarily focused on tree board and tree permitting. A senior planner position that has been vacant since April. And a new community development director. The budget summary you have on your screen represents that status quo. You'll see some primary changes. Not staff and benefits and the other significant. Line item and point out is professional services. You'll see from the raw numbers. It reflects the $500,000 Commerce Grant. And the $50,000 Middle Housing Grant. Those deliverables to the Department of Commerce are due in June of 2025. Even though the work would start in theory tomorrow. As you are aware, we have some high-level planning efforts already underway. Obviously, the comp plan, which we'll talk back, talk about at seven P M. And transmit that to the council. We have the climate element. That's the subject of that Commerce Grant. The middle housing development regulations from the recent legislation. The Shoreline Master Program update was substantially done in 2019, but not completed and finished. We've missed the last round. We need to pick that up and finish that before the next round approaches. Critical areas ordinance. We have a year from adoption of our comp plan to relook at what I consider are already strong critical areas ordinance. Ongoing work with trees and tree regulations, closure on the sign code. And then there are three chapters that in the Minnesota code that have not been relooked at for a substantial amount of time. That we would intend to get to if and when we had time wireless subdivision. Oh, no, just two. And then that last category, current planning code enforcement. Permit reviews, issuance and so forth. The building division. In the department. Serves residents at the counter in the field and online. Right now, we're heavily paper oriented and are working towards an electronic. Style or system, and there's some challenges there, but we are taking steps to go in that direction. No FTEs or resources are being requested. The building official Calvin's last day is Tuesday. We have a recruitment underway for that position. And the permit, now the permit coordinator, now that certification has been achieved is three-quarters time. Oh, and I anticipated a question. What happens on Wednesday when Calvin is at home? We have an existing services contract with P H C. When Kevin is was here and was on vacation, they did the inspections and so forth. So starting next week, they'll fill in. The primary building focus or functions are enumerated on this slide. There's there's three. Types, building code, building official duties and interpretations. Permit application reviews and issuance, and then inspections and enforcement. And the codes mentioned there are primarily the building codes, energy codes. Things like that. L and I does electrical, but everything else that's building related is that division. The the budget summary slide primarily shows increases in salaries and benefits for those existing FTEs. And slight adjustments to to bring the other line items up into the anticipated levels in the next few years. No other requests or significant highlights. And that pretty much describes the two divisions under the Community Development Department and open for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Director Hoffman. Colleagues, questions for Mr. Hoffman this time? I want to make sure I. Catch Deputy Mayor Bodie as well. Keep an eye for your hand there, Lori. Any questions for? Yeah.
When looking at the professional services in the planning department, it, once you take out the five hundred fifty for the grants. It does look like we're slightly lower than the twenty-three, twenty-four projected sort of need is. Have you, how did you evaluate how much projected professional services we would need outside of those two grants?
It's an anticipation of the same level of projects like. Shoreline Master Program and so forth.
Okay.
And project reviews and an estimate of how that would continue. And now the interest rates have been lowered. I feel even more reassured about that, that it's not gonna severely get. Then it incorporates grants, but it doesn't go much further than that with the sound transit reviews coming because those are more ministerial permits. Revenues, permit fees, but done by existing staff FTEs for trees, critical areas and so forth. So the the aspects of that big thing we have coming are already covered. So I categorize it as status quo with the resources we have.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Colleagues, any other questions for Director Hoffman this time? Okay. Deputy Mayor Bodie, did you have any questions for Director Hoffman?
No, I do not. I, well, maybe I do. So when you are looking at salaries. What can you, can you explain the basis for the increases in salaries that you're ex? That you're expecting to have? And I know I do understand the pressures on salaries and the need to. Recruit competent people, especially in light of our vacant positions, but. If you could just give us a little more narrative explanation of the basis for the increases in salaries over time and employee benefits that you have here.
I'll do that in two parts. One primary change from the past is planning manager is now community development director. And then I'll defer to the finance director for the.
Yeah, so great question, Councilmember Bodie, and. Throughout the last couple of years, we we've walked through some significant changes in market adjustments. Team and market adjustments and M P E wage adjustments in addition to salary or benefits, excuse me, adjustments in the sense of. Healthcare increases continue to rise at a rate of about eight percent this year and. Some other, basically, when you increase, just it's a snowball effect. When you increase the wage, you increase the payroll taxes, you increase. L and I has gone up. Everything seems to be going up at once. And it just creates an additional, an additional increase across the board as we're trying to prepare these budgets. So it it's a mixed bag of an of an answer. And then we have some projected what we are anticipating for the adjustments in order to keep each. Position whole and. And market adjustments and then cost of living adjustments, which are being handled separately. And handled directly through the H R department, who is going through and evaluating each. Line line item by line item, basically, each position, I shouldn't say line item. Each position individually to make sure that we're staying within market, similar to what we do for Teamsters and the Guild.
Thank you. Do you, do you believe that the percentage increases that we're seeing for our city? In terms of operating expenses for salaries over time and benefits are are in addition to being comparable for the Police Guild and. And the Teamsters is are are other cities experiencing comparable pressures?
Absolutely. Without without a doubt in my mind, and as you just look around at. And you can see other jobs and we've tried to build in. In addition, and I'm going to use the planning department as an example. The associate planner. So we we aren't proposing to add an additional F T E. But we are proposing to have stair step, a stair stepped approach to allowing a young planner to come in, an assistant planner, and to have. Ways to step up to become a senior planner in order to try to assist in the goal of retaining people. And I'm gonna city administrator hill.
I also wanted to point out that what we do the same comparables for the M P Es that we do for the Teamsters and the Guild. And so. When the H R director goes through and looks, she compares us to the surrounding cities. And so the increases that you're seeing in any given department, it's not across the board. It's not every employee, but it is those compared to our our comparable cities, we're matching them. And so, yes, we've we've seen them go up already. And the theory is don't lose great people to surrounding cities because of pay disparity.
Yes, thank you very much, and I completely agree that employee retention is really important because every time you lose an employee. The costs associated with bringing in a new employee are significant, especially in a small city like ours. So. I I actually think that the promotion ladder potential for the associate planner is a is a great idea. Thanks a lot. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Vice President Ferretti.
Hi, Director Hoffman, and thank you very much for the clear presentation. I just wanted to ask about that specific half million dollar Department of Commerce grant. And whether, you know, I I recall that someone said, and possibly you, said that we could recover staff costs from that grant. Would it be possible to hire a temporary climate action manager using some of that grant money? On the basis of if we had city staff that was devoted to working on the Climate Action Plan, whether part-time or full-time, they could be reimbursed from the grant?
The the grant funding itself through the. Bring the Climate Act. Is specific to the scope of the grant application and work. So we have that. That's the scope of work that is due by next June. Now we have the level of Cascadia working with the Climate Policy Advisor Team on that scope. To do that, that's only a large chunk of the $500,000. The remaining portion can be spent. Also working on that scope with different resources. Right now, it's anticipated its existing staff. If there was were a discussion about other staff performing that same specific scope, then the answer could be yes. The difficulty would be making sure that happens because that money could not be used for a position to work on other things. So that mixing and matching, mixing and matching and the timing may preclude that.
Well, thank you. I think you've answered a question that a lot of our community members have asked.
Colleagues, any other questions for Director Hoffman? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation very much. And with that, we're gonna move on to Public Works with Director Perrigo. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will do my best to speak up and have the mic right in my face. Great, thank you, man. Well. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we'll be taking a look at the Public Works budget presentation for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six biennium. First, let's cover what Public Works does and does not do. Generally speaking, we operate and maintain stormwater system, sanitary sewer system. Road away network, parks and open spaces, facilities and vehicles and equipment. What we don't do is the electricity. Obviously, S C L covers that telecom, community, other communications, that's not under our purview, as well as potable water and solid waste, although we do have the contract with solid waste, but we don't actually do it ourselves. So just want to set the guidelines for the expectations for that. Having said that, so what are the assets that we do maintain and operate? What's what's the quantity of of those items? So for. Pavement, for example, it's about one hundred and ten miles, lane miles of pavement, ten miles of sidewalks, three facilities, we have the city hall plus two, two structures at Public Works. Roughly thirty-nine miles of storm sewer lines, thirty-five, forty-five miles of sewer lines. Nine miles of ditches, we have forty-plus acres of parks and open spaces, and we just acquired a little bit more of that. And as well as we've got about fifty sewer grinder pumps that are out out and about in in the community. And roughly fifteen hundred or more annuals utility locates that are done just about every day of the week. We have some emergencies and some that are the two-day, but again, that's that's a lot of. A lot of you locates to cover for a small city. So what does the Public Works Department look like? Well, the organizational chart, this would be the optimized. Or chart in my mind, anyway. We'd have the two basic groups. We have the capital improvements group as well as the maintenance and operations. Within the capital improvements group, we've got senior project manager and then a project manager. Those positions currently exist. My desire would have a stormwater manager within that same category, that same group. As well as a G S manager, and the G S manager position was actually one of the one of the highest rated items that we talked about in the retreat. Seemed to be a coalescence around having that position exist on a maintenance operation side. We have a operations superintendent, the. Field staff with six people as well as two seasonals that are currently in the budget. So the green, green items are the ones that would kind of be the niceties or the ones that we really should have to to close out. To complete the the whole of Public Works Department. The Public Works Manager position, that would be a position above the existing. Operations Superintendent, and that person would deal more with some council requests as well as working with other agencies in our area. That that position for the Operations Superintendent is definitely, as it is now, is definitely a two-person position. As well as the Senior Project Manager, that is a two-person position. Stormwater would be the one focus as well as the other would be. Transportation, for example, those sorts of things. And let me catch up on my slides here. This is what we currently have. Matt, can you make the? Great, thank you. So what we currently have under the capital improvement section of our division would be our senior project manager as well as the project manager. The senior project manager position has been vacant vacant since April, so we're going on roughly six months without a senior project manager. The Operations Superintendent left recently this month, so that position is vacant. So those are two positions that are really critical, one for getting our capital projects. Done, and the other is to make sure that the maintenance side of things is running. At full speed and having all the resources that they need at hand as well as the supervision. What we do have budgeted in this budget, the proposed budget budget would cover the stormwater manager position. We do have one senior project manager position that is proposed. And that would, in my mind, be dedicated for a stormwater manager. The. So that that stormwater manager would actually be kind of a dual role. It'd be primarily, it would be focused on stormwater. Somewhere projects as well as complying with M P D S. Mandate that we have, which is again, very. Very extensive and consequences of not following through with the required some of that could certainly lead to fines and penalties, which are certainly nothing that we want to venture into. So some of the current challenges that we have in Public Works, finding qualified staff. It took about a year and a half for us to find our current project manager. And we are six months into not having our senior project manager position filled. Obviously, inflationary effects that are still hitting us. We see that in services as well as goods. We have our limited funding that that we have to contend with and then increased regulatory requirements. Those things are not, they will not start. Reducing regulatory requirements that they're just gonna get more difficult every year. And as far as future budget impacts, staff retention and replacement, again, we're talking about that and. Many times through this, these discussions that we've been having. The other important things are aging fleet and equipment. We've got pieces of equipment that are twenty-plus years old. And then, again, cost of goods and services, those are gonna be ongoing issues that we have to deal with. Now, the next slide represents a. A real life situation that we've experienced here in public works over the last three years. I've been here since October of twenty-one to now, which is thirty-five months. I've got my three years coming up next month. And during that time, again, this graph is to represent the. Basically, the situation that we've had in in the project manager and senior project manager position. Senior project, city engineer position was vacated by previously city engineer. We turned that position into a senior project manager position. So at that point, we had a project manager. And he was elevated to senior project man, senior project manager position. And. So he had, he has been here since since that time, and again, he left in April. So we had one project manager for an extended period of time. And we recently hired our current project manager back in December. So by the numbers, if you look at the percentage of times that we had two project managers, that was twenty percent, twenty-one percent of the last roughly three years. Seventy percent of the time, we had one. And ten percent, we had none. And during that ten, that ten percent was from a paternity leave situation. So we are running very, very lean on project managers and the ability to get capital projects pushed through. As a result of of our staffing needs. So some of the employee expenses considerations, we did talk about salaries and benefits being a main driver for our budget and our budget increases. And we had talked about that previously with Director Hoffman's conversation with. Councilmember Bodie, just to reiterate some of those things, market adjustments and. From previously and currently that we're having allocating seasonal workers appropriately to the correct fund, those have have. Increased our funds that you'll see in the budget slides. Benefits increasing in twenty twenty-five by eight percent and six to eight percent twenty twenty-six. That's what we're expect. And then L and I increases about fifteen percent. And again, as payroll taxes increase. The wages increase. Those are all drivers that increase the employee benefits and salaries. So we'll start going through. Individual budgets for the parks. The highlight for that one is. The seasonal, seasonals that we had, we actually were very fortunate. We had four seasonals this year. All of them very qualified and dedicated individuals. To set the stage, we do have about, we have about roughly forty acres of parks, six miles of pathways, and then all the other many is within the parks. Again, we were fortunate enough for seasonals to help this year with the maintenance accrues. Their work supplemented our our crews, and they were all very dedicated. You can see at the bottom, the. Percent increase overall for for the parks budget is two point eight percent. So we're we'll hold in line fairly well there. But again, the salaries for the seasonals was the big driver. For the budget increase. And we'll move on to facilities. So the facilities, again, that comprises of the three facilities that we have, city hall, as well as the two structures over at the Public Works. City Hall and Public Works Yard are in need of increased repairs and upgrades. This building is twenty years old and. The house that we have our Public Works folks into at at the yard is is getting up there in age two, so. So the proposed budget is expected to increase roughly twenty percent from last last biennium. And the main driver for that is the repairs and maintenance item. And I will mention also at the. What tangential to facilities is the inter bin covers that that'll be coming in. We do have, we did receive bids for that. And the contract will be forthcoming, and the work will actually start in mid February, by mid February. There was a delay in the. Our request to start the work based on timing. So that'll that'll be starting no later than Jan, February fifteenth.
Pardon me. Would you speak up or is your microphone still on?
It is on.
It is on. Would you speak up a little, please?
I will try.
Um, as I tell my staff sometimes, use your outdoor voice. So that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.
Some of us are, well, never mind.
For the, let's see here, street maintenance. So within street maintenance fund, addresses primarily the city's non-salary and benefits portion, maintaining the street network such as signs, pavement markings and snowplowing and those sorts of things. Almost half the expenditures are used for street lighting with large amounts for snow plowing and roadside maintenance. Uh almost half the expenditures are used for street lighting with large amounts for snow plowing and roadside maintenance, roadside maintenance land item. Was reduced based on our uh historical data. Uh you'll see that has actually dropped um. I believe it's from a hundred and forty thousand down to about eighty thousand. In recognition that um. Which budget what we need. So again, the overall budget for this uh this fund uh for twenty twenty-five is expected to actually decrease by one point four percent. Or our, our street operations, um the proposed budget for this, this um budget is expected to increase by about thirty-two percent. From the previous budget, um the Street Operations Fund addresses the city's salary and benefits portion, maintaining the street network. Then snowplow, pavement markings, restriping, streetlight costs, uh and general road repairs and maintenance. And more of, more than half of the expenditures are used for salary and benefits. So this is a real heavy user of that. Um the two items to recognize on this one again is the seasonals that we used um over the summer for work, um and then also the um. The funds that we have transferred, the transfer funds that we have down at the bottom, those three items are uh big drivers of the increase. And then engineering. This budget is planned to increase by about twenty-two percent and the engineering group provides support for the capital projects as well as. Uh master planning and professional service contracts, the largest increase uh are found in the salary and benefits as well as inter fund transfers. Again, those are starting to hit us um. That's for the five oh one, five oh two. Which is vehicles and technology.
Excuse me, Director, uh excuse me, sorry, I should raise my hand here.
Deputy Mr. Bodie, please.
Yes, sorry about that. Um uh Director Perrigo, um can you explain what lobbying activity is?
I will refer you to our finance director.
I would be happy to explain what lobbying activities uh are. It's our state and federal lobbying activities. So. It's Shelley who comes and speaks to you on a um. Occasionally at the end of the year uh in order to create our plan. And then Jake Johnson, who comes and he's our federal lobbyist. And so uh you will see it in the three oh two fund and then you'll also see it again uh a little later in surface water.
Um, oh, thank you. Now I understand that. And so that is um. Basically our search for grant front funds for public works projects.
Fine, yes, um thank you, cuz uh City Administrator Hill, after I finished talking, was in my ear of. Please explain why it's in those two funds, which I did not. Uh and it's you connected the dots quite well uh without my, my explanation. It's for the projects. And the capital side and it mainly falls under three oh two, which are the transportation capital items. And the surface water capital support. That's why they're funded from those two funds specifically.
So I would simply suggest that we put the word grants in here somewhere. Uh connect it to the lobbying in this line item, just so it's clear. Uh uh because as soon as uh you said that, I went, oh, right, um but it wasn't clear to me at first glance.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yep, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Councilwoman Goldman, no, that's perfectly okay.
Um actually, on, on point with that, is it possible for us to quantify? What our return on investment is for lobbying activities? And whether those funds are effective for the city or if they would be better repurposed, say, to help pay for a climate coordinator?
Hi, I'm sorry, we were talking about the last item and I missed your question.
So the question was whether or not uh if there's a way to quantify. The uh efficacy of the lobbying act- activity and the expenditures in this case, uh or should. Um if it's not as effective, it would, some of these funds be used for a climate action manager? Is that a fair?
Yes, thank you.
Can I get back to you on that one? I just. So instead of transferring, so you're saying instead of transferring funds out of. Say in public works into lobbying activities, take those same funds, reallocate them and pay for a different. Type of position.
I, I suppose what I'm asking is, is our lobbying effective? Because if it's effective, then yes, let's keep it. But if we're throwing money at a lobbyist and we're not getting results, then is there some better use for those funds?
I, I would say absolutely, the lobbying has been worth it. Um the federal side is very hard to get through. We've done a lot of good work. Um on the state side, absolutely, it's worth it. They stand up for. Values that are important to this community. Um while we may not always be chasing dollars, we have received dollars, direct legislative. Allocations that have come through Wash Dot for projects um. And Department of Commerce, et cetera, but. They also help us push back on, you know, zoning sizes that fit all, you know, one size fits all type of things. So whether that has to do with housing, et cetera. They're not always delivering a dollar. Value to you i- in form of a contract, but a value to you i- in how you wanna see your community develop.
Thank you. And I just add too, if I might, it's an excellent question, Larry. Um this community through the lobbying efforts, particularly at the federal level, has brought in. I think prior to two thousand eighteen, over twenty million dollars in, in um. Uh grants for, uh funding for culvert projects. That's, that's why we have the. The project from two thousand fifteen, which was a massive project here under five twenty-two and being able to march up. Uh uh the creek here uh now culminating, not culminating, but now the next step, of course, is the one at, at thirty-fifth Street. As in conjunction with the Wash Dot. And I would just say for my experience that. In this kind of situation, it's slow and steady wins the race because it's a constant um uh being available to, to advocate. For our community and for what we're looking for. And particularly in the case of the federal side. We have always fallen through the cracks when it came to either small or. You know, larger cities, we, we've been advocating for a medium si- sized city set aside for many, many years because we've been ineligible for grants. At the federal level and many cases because of our size. I think Deputy Mayor Bodie is gonna have some intelligent things to say on the topic, probably more intelligent than I just did. It was.
Uh yes, uh thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um I wanted to say that um first of all, our lobbyists, we combine forces. They work for us. And others similarly situated cities, both our federal and our state lobbyists. And uh I do think that when you lobby for funds for grants, it's sometimes a two to five year. Or sometimes even more effort, um but we've been remarkably successful in getting both state. Uh getting state money, but also uh working to get set asides for small cities to get grants. Uh because on some federal grants, we've been in competition with cities like Seattle, Everett, Tacoma. So we've uh, we've made headway on that, on having earmarked funds for smaller cities. And we're optimistic that we can expand that into other grant programs from where we've gotten it already. Um uh looking ahead, I think uh we are looking um not only at issues like uh culvert projects and the roundabout. But also at the Burke Gilman Connector Project, which has a possible um. Opportunities for uh for federal funds as, as well going forward. So that's something we're keeping on the radar. So overall, I think for the size of our investment. We're getting an excellent return on investment and our um, our lobbying individuals are um. Are really people we've had for a while and quite uh knowledgeable about our community. So they're very effective advocates.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and just not to go too, too far down this rabbit hole. We do have a meeting coming up with. Representative Jai Paul about uh the two point five million dollars we've requested from the federal government for the lakefront property uh development. Any other. Qualmless questions on point here from Councilwoman Goldman? Okay, we're gonna run out of time, so let's keep moving here, Mr. Perrigo, please. Okay, so moving on to the sewer utility fund, uh there's um. Uh the expected increase of thirteen point two percent for the next biennium. And largest increases are notably in the case he metro charges, salaries, any inter fund transfers. Uh we expect the repairs. Uh the other line item is that we expect the repairs and maintenance line item to reduce uh two hundred thousand dollars from one forty-five is the uh other item of, of note. And following up in, in the sewer, sewer utility is the sewer, um the new rates that we have. And I'll invite Director Vaughn to come up and, or speak from there.
Uh is it, is it all right with council if I just speak from here? Are we good? Okay. So I just wanna quickly go over the rates. This was a request from, actually, I believe it was about a week ago. Um to present this sooner than later to the community and um so here are the rates. So this is the sewer um residential rate on top. And first, we always talk about the King County portion and the King County portion is a direct pass-through um for wastewater treatment services. And then the other portion is the city's portion of the rate to end up being the full total of the rate. This is based on a monthly uh on our bills that we send out on invoices. We do send them out bimonthly, so every two months. So it will look a little different than this. So. Uh proposing for uh twenty twenty-five, the rate will go up five point five percent, meaning jointly. So King County's rate's gonna go up, the county's portion, if you look actually down low, below the uh five point five, is five point seven five. And then the city's portion of the rate being uh the smaller portion, that's gonna, we're proposing. To increase that rate at five percent. And then what is not in the actual base rate being the King County and the city's rate. Um to equal the eighty dollars and seventy-four cents for twenty twenty-five is in addition, there's the utility tax that's uh. Added on after the fact. So I'm just making note of that, the, the full story there, walking through. And then I do, I definitely wanna make note of the sewer monthly service charge for commercial and multifamily, that that ends up. Um increasing at this rate down below the, the bottom um box. And so that is based on their consumption. Um we have four different water districts. They report back to us and then we charge them accordingly. And that again is proposed to go up at the same rate um. And I think that concludes my overview.
I would just note, colleagues, that I wasn't aware of this, but we have a sewer te- televised, uh television, including televising. A sewer. I was not aware of that. The sewer channel? Sorry, falling flat. Moving on. So then we'll move on to the surface water utility um. So in twenty-five, twenty-six biennium, the surface water utility budget expected to increase by about ten point four percent. Largest increases are notably in the salaries and, and inter fund transfers. Uh with significant increases in the past few years, we're optimistically reducing our expenses uh in professional services and the system maintenance and operations. Um as you know, with, with our senior proj- uh senior project manager that was here, um Andy, he did a lot of work and spent a lot of work, a lot of money on. Professional services and why not to get us in a position where we're actually in a pretty good place right now, so. And again, that uh increases about ten point four percent. And that. Follows with. The rates for sur- surface water.
So um walking into the surface water rates, what's currently being proposed is ten percent in order to keep up with the ongoing increasing costs. Um that are just the standard across the board costs. The additional ten percent to add to a full twenty is being requested in order to support. Um an NPDES position that will one hundred percent be funded from the surface water fund and. Not allocate their time anywhere else in order to keep the city in compliance with all of the requirements. Um from the NPDES and so here the rate is being proposed uh showing for the single family. From twenty twenty-four, what it currently is and then walking uh over with the twenty percent increase. Of what it will be and then showing the annual increase in the dollar amount of the delta of the actual, what twenty percent means in a dollar value. Which is for twenty twenty-five, fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents. And then taking that rate from twenty-five and doing the same thing, proposing to increase it at twenty percent again in twenty twenty-six again. To keep pace with the ongoing increasing operation costs in addition to that ten percent of. Having it directly allocated for that position that will one hundred percent be dedicated to the surface water fund. And to keeping the city in compliance.
Colleagues, questions about surface water utility rates? Councilwoman Lebo.
Thank you. For the benefit, would you describe um when it talks about class, very light to very high and how that gets implemented?
I would be happy to defer that, is that something that we might have to circle back?
Let me take a stab at that. Um it's based on the percent impervious surface. And there's, there's a rate uh. Is that?
I, I can help take a stab at this as well. So when Andy was working on this, they used. Uh I believe G I S mapping and the consultant went through and between um. Our former Senior Project Manager. And the consultant, they evaluated the parcels to determine how much impervious surface there was on that. And so it goes from. The zero percent all the way up to a very high of a hundred percent and each one of those categories was broken down and applied a rate. So it was, it's a lot of back and forth and as Director Perrigo mentioned, a lot of professional services budget that went into, to determining that. And I believe that was part of our S mapping. Um they looked at that as well.
So just as a follow-up, is that uh for? Is that for commercial or is it for residential?
I believe that is for single-family residential, that's what it says right there. Yeah.
So a single-family residential that has a very high impervious service would be paying at the end of this um.
Oh wait, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's, it's commercial. You're, I'm, I was misreading the tab. Single families up above in one line item, the. Classes below are very light to heavy and they're commercial. It uses. Multifamily. Et cetera. Sorry for the confusion.
Um it would be helpful to label it.
We can do that?
Yes.
This conversation actually came up about, to your question, Mr. Lebo, about the density or very light or however you wanna call it here. In the, in conjunction with the town center um process and it was one where people felt, the community felt. That the heavy. Almost hundred percent impervious surface types of situations such as. Town center is pretty close to that, should be um, should be very consider, very much considered in terms of the way the planning process would work in the future. Yes, Vice Chair, her turn.
Thank you. And uh thanks, thanks to our preparo for summarizing this, the effect on our residents and uh. Just doing a little bit of math on TV, um roughly speaking, that's about a hundred and twenty dollar increase uh over the biennium. Uh for the, uh for the um surface water portion of the bill, which I believe is charged on the property tax, right, on the bill?
That. That is correct.
Okay, um and so let's say that we have a thousand households on this, uh uh you know, paying this to the surface water um. Their sur- surface water portion, that's roughly a hundred and twenty thousand over the biennium, which means sixty thousand a year. So. Um when you say we fund our uh new um NPDES technician, that is say the person who's looking after the surface water. This is uh the, 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 this seems like a very steep increase, but it really is to in fact pay for that position.
I can jump in here. So we, we have a spreadsheet on the backside that um. Director Vaughn and somebody else put together, maybe it was Andy, that is a rate calculator. And when you plug in ten percent into the rate calculator. It equals about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So when we looked. Am I good? Okay, um on an annual basis. And so the ten percent at a hundred and seventy thousand dollar. Covers the increasing costs of operations. The other ten percent at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the. The other ten percent at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the budgeted number for salaries and benefits for a position that would do all the stormwater and NPDS compliance. Great.
So the NPDS is, is it, it's a combination of both residential and commercial. And so when we think about residential, we're really thinking about a proportionate amount of impervious surface such as roadways, because most homes, the surface water, I mean, doesn't drain to a, any sort of catchment. It does at the road as well as we do for commercial. So the MP, NPDES, is it focused on residential or commercial? And so when you take into account, for example, roadways, so therefore a portion of it should be paid by the residential, if we're in fact roadways, but if it's primarily commercial, should we be increasing the rates for our residents when the impact is really on commercial?
I, I think the one thing that we have to look at here is some of the, so answer your question, it goes to both. I mean, we have surface water in residential areas that just sheet flows into streams and we know that the upcoming regulations are going to start talking about treatment and on top of it, they shouldn't be going into streams. But yet I think you're right. The majority of it's focusing on commercial as far as the NPDS requirements. The other thing that this position would do is focus on these failing culverts that we've had as of late and any culvert projects. As we've discussed in the past, having the senior project manager do not only all the road projects, but all the stormwater and culvert projects is, is the reason that we need to break that apart because it's too much work for one individual. And I don't know if I answered your full question, but.
I, I guess my question is, is commercial paying the right rate? Or the impact?
I would have to ask our consultants who did that work for us.
Thank you, everybody. Colleagues, other questions on point? About surface water rates and utility. Okay, thank you, Dr. Perrigo.
Okay. And then this, this slide here is, it just recaps everything that we had just discussed as far as the different funds, the dollar change in each fund as well as percentage change. And the first line for the totals, it's about thirteen point one percent for our seven funds there. And if you exclude King County utilities increase, our effective rate is seven point six seven percent increase over all of the, the funds that we've got there. Again, ranging from minus one point four percent all the way up to thirty two point two percent. And then finally, future needs in public works, we need to rightsize the, the staffing. Again, we're I think when you look at other communities, we're definitely on the much smaller size. Increase funding for, for the department as well. Replace the aging fleet and equipment, become GIS centric. I think that's a very important part. Deploy laptops in the field and technology to the field. We do have some laptops in hand. It's just a matter of deploying those. And then development, a, a full asset management plan, so we can have a better idea of where we're going to go in the future. And if there's any other questions?
Quick question is, are the laptops in, are they included in the IT upgrades?
We already have them in hand. So then, yep.
Colleagues, other questions for Director Perrigo? Okay. Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate the presentation. Okay. And with that, we are going to adjourn. You can take a quick break here. We'll be back at seven o'clock.